To give the invitation. Noah at DSDL, Savior Jesus Christ, come to you this evening, ask that you watch over us as we try to put our minds together and come up with best solutions for Pawnee Nation, dear heavenly Father. Keep the best interest at heart, let us open our eyes, our ears, our hearts and our minds, dear heavenly Father. Be with our mourners today and those that have their loved ones today. Also ask that you, in particular, watch over those that have been impacted by the storms that went through yesterday, dear heavenly Father. Those families that may be experiencing loss, dear heavenly Father, we lift them up here. And thank you for this beautiful day, thank you for the rain, dear heavenly Father. Let it help nourish this mother earth so she can continue to provide for us, dear heavenly Father. Now continue to watch over us as we proceed through the meeting and our safe travels home, dear heavenly Father. Asking you all these things in your Son, Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Item number two, roll call.
Kristina Nettle.
Here.
Jordan Canuho.
Uh, his excuse is on his way.
George Garter, yes, Carol Chapman.
Here.
Cynthia Butler.
Here.
Donna Hare.
Tiffany.
Carol Nettle.
Uh, she's excuse, she's on her way.
Jennifer Littleson.
Here.
Do you prefer Jennifer Littleson or Jennifer Littleson, go over?
Oh, well, you gotta, you had to say J.L., I looked up at J.G.L.
Go over Littleson.
Got you.
Item number three, approval of agenda, are there any changes?
Uh, yes, I'd like to move five approval minutes and we'll just do as I may must move. And then...
Uh, no, we're gonna keep...
Okay. Only changes on that.
Okay. Any other changes, additions by council?
Oh, just taking off section five approval minutes. Yeah, the three, five, one, two, three. There was some changes that they did into the practice. Probably. Oh, then we can look at that. I don't know problems with that.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll interchange a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with changes.
Got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Butler, second by Councilwoman here. Let's call for the vote.
George Garter, yes, Carol Chapman.
Yes.
Cynthia Butler.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Aha.
Carol Nettle, oh, sorry. Jennifer Gober Littleson.
Yes.
And I have Vice President attending the meeting at 5:39 PM. Okay, next item we have is item number four, new business. Item number one, approval of resolution 2527, acceptance of Pawnee Business Council regular election results. Yes, Councilwoman Butler.
I just have a few things that, for recommendation. On the prayer, the now therefore be it resolved, it says Pawnee Nation regular election and it should say Pawnee Business Council regular election. And then at the end of that sentence, after 2025, since there is a period, just make the recommendation to return down and be it further resolved, the reelected officers of the Pawnee Business Council are, and taking off one and two. And then after secretary and newly elected members, take off three and four. The numbers. And then a period at the end of that sentence. And that's all I have for recommendations.
And you said, and the newly elected?
Yes, because they're newly elected, but the officers, the two officers are reelected.
Yeah, I just didn't get that one. Um, and then did we say with, if we were gonna stick with a hyphen in Vice President or not?
I don't think it's like that in the Constitution. I think it's without a hyphen. So I would refer back to the Constitution for the spelling.
Okay.
Okay, it does have a hyphen in there in the Constitution, so we will make sure we make those changes to all the minutes and resolutions.
Looking for a motion with changes. There's not any other changes.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2527 with changes.
Got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion made by Councilwoman Butler, second by Councilwoman here. Call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garter, yes, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aha.
Jennifer Gober Littleson?
Yes.
Okay, item number two, Budget Committee recommendations. Item number A, approval of 2231 Child Welfare Services Budget Modification Number One. Treasurer Chapman?
Yes, we have one item discussed in Budget Committee and this is submitted by Randy Marks and the program is Child Welfare Services and the funding source is Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Families. And it is to increase the budget by eighty dollars to reflect the award letter of nine thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. And this funding in September 30th, 2025. And attached is the award letter to match the amount of money awarded. The justifications are in here with the line items and the budget shows at the end nine thousand five hundred and five dollars plus eighty dollars added as of now for a total of nine thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. So all the documentation, justification, everything required is in here. And if there are no more, if there aren't any questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Treasurer Chapman, second by Vice President Canuho. We have Councilwoman Nettle attending at 5:43 PM. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garter, yes, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aha.
Carol Nettle? Jennifer Gober Littleson?
Yes.
Item number... Item number three, approval of resolution 2528, Indian Preference BIA Signature Authorization. I don't know who's presenting on this, but I can go ahead and present. This is a resolution that requires any updates of email. Per the enrollment director, an email went out in March from the regional office of the BIA and is asking if there were any changes, that the changes be updated by resolution and sent in. And this resolution is also, it also adds our new executive director, Virgil Wade, and continues with the other signatories on there. Vice President, oh, I'm sorry, Mistin Nettle, President George Garter, Secretary Virgil Wade, Executive Director, and Kerry Peters, Enrollment Director. Anybody marking the changes? I have in, in the third, whereas, the enrollment division be capitalized, capital E, capital D. And then the fourth, whereas, capital F in federal. And that's all I see.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2528 for Indian Preference Authorization.
Second.
Second.
With, with changes?
With changes.
With changes.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman here, second by Vice President Canuho. Now for the discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garter, yes, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aha.
Carol Nettle?
Yes.
Okay, item number, where is Dr. ... Item number six, Pawnee, well, that makes it to number five. Pawnee Business Council Travel Report and Request. Or do we just need to make a motion to table the minutes, all the minutes?
Oh, we are removing them.
Just remove them, okay. So item number five, Pawnee Business Council Travel Report and Request, are there any travel reports needing to be made? Don't have any travel. Any requests? Good job.
Madam Chairman, can you hear me?
Secretary Gar... Secretary Gar...
Oh, yeah, I was supposed to attend the sobriety ceremony, June 12th, 13th.
Sorry, we're trying to take notes since we didn't have, we don't really have support staff this evening. Six, twelve, thirteen. Oh, sorry, sorry. I know, I'm trying to, I know, you're trying to do dual roles tonight, so, Councilwoman Nettle.
Yes, Madam Chairman. Good evening, Council. Sorry for being late, had a doctor's appointment, blah, blah, blah. Apologize. There is Southern Plains Tribal Health Development, our tribal health board is having a tribal leaders convening, convening tribal leaders and it's about grants and contracts, resources available for grants. They're providing financial information and, and that sort of thing. I was invited and I will, I will also send out the invitation to others, I don't know if you have to be invited or not, but it is a free seminar, will not cost the tribe anything but my time. And so I'm just requesting to attend this on behalf of the Pawnee Nation and I will bring back a report. Thank you.
Do you recall the date on that?
What was the date on that?
I want to start with the...
May 24th.
If I have it all forwarded to you as well. I have a request to attend the DOI consultation, Department of Interior consultation in Oklahoma City. There is gonna be a tribal leaders meeting on June the 2nd, the day before the consultation begins at 10 o'clock and it ends at 3:30. This information will also be forwarded to council. Also, on June 18th and 19th, there's an Indian Healthcare Improvement Act, Affordable Care Act training that's to be held at River Spirit in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And this is the second year that they've put on the training. It was held last year in, I don't know if it was Seattle or Portland, but it's here now, it's local, so that is June the 18th and 19th. Indian Healthcare Improvement Act, Affordable Care Act. Any other requests? No, I don't entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve travel.
Got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Butler, second by Councilwoman here. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garter, yes, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aha.
Carol Nettle?
Yes.
Jennifer Gober Littleson?
Yes.
Item number six, Pawnee Business Council Committee Reports, are there any committee reports? Item number seven, open forum, do we have anything for open forum? Yes.
Is it working now? Noah, thank you for taking some time here on an open forum to hear what I have to say. I want to start with an introduction because I know not everybody here knows me. Tatasla Jo Buford, my Aka was, sorry, I'm a little nervous, I don't like speaking in front of cameras or people. My Aka was born in Pawnee, my family is tribal citizens. My Aka was born Josie Eva in 1925, but through relocation, is better known as Mary Jo Barker or Baldwin. Her mother was Mary Barker Moore and I grew up listening to my mother tell stories about getting to come home to Pawnee for Pawnee Pow Wow every summer and getting to stay with Colonel Moore and Mary Barker Moore, my Aka's, my grandparents. So I'm here tonight for just a few reasons. For those of you who don't know, I am now the Managing Director for the Pawnee Seed Preservation Society. It has been our intention to bridge the gap between us for a while now. So I'd like to start with an apology for the delay in that, as well as address that to the best availability that I can today. That will start with presenting you all with a letter for you all to read and discuss privately and then I would like to open that doorway to further communications down the road, not trying to hijack this meeting here, but it is important that we have a conversation. The other reason I'm here is I have been watching for a while now quietly in the back, a lot of friends on Facebook, like some of our relatives now. And at the last meeting, Ms. Teeter came forward and had several questions as a viewer and as somebody who cares deeply about both our tribal citizens and our programs and our culture. It was very hurtful to hear a lack of responses from the PBC regarding some of her questions about the corn. As you know, regardless of position as tribal citizens, we all hold this very deeply. This is a cultural issue that we care very much about. It's past a food, it's not a product, it's not a crop, this is our sacred mother. And personally, I feel as though it's time that we have that conversation and the actions that are required to show not just this council, but all of the Okitaroo out there, the transparency is key moving forward, has to start with a simple conversation in a face-to-face manner. So that's why I'm here today. I do have that letter, I'd like to give all of you and open myself up for any questions if you have any, as well as in that letter goes over how you can contact us and where our offices are if we want to continue on in that way. I would also like to extend that invitation out to not just this council, but all of the original families that helped start this program 20 years ago. It's been rather difficult to make connections out there and so here I am in front of you now, asking for your assistance to honor the original sacrifice that all of those families made to start this project. In addition to that, I want to open up that invitation to all of our citizens, if anybody has questions or concerns, anybody who's willing to have a constructive conversation about this, I'm willing to hold space for that conversation. We have an office here in Pawnee downtown, right next to where the Buffalo Room, we're there Monday, Tuesday and Thursday during pretty normal business hours, you'll forgive us. We're still transitioning through these times and it's not quite up to snuff yet, but we're making strides in the right direction and I think the conversation is well past due, not just with this council, but with all of our tribal members out there. So with that, I will kneel back if anyone has any questions and have a good answer.
First of all, let me thank you for attending tonight and hearing the concerns of the tribal members that you attend and for you to watch the movie, just, I mean, watch the videos to stay engaged in what's going on with the nation. Also, you know, there's, there's been a lot of, like you're saying, you know, non-communication between us and the Seed Preservation Society. And I think, you know, a lot of it is because it is not a program under the nation, so we're not able to answer a lot of questions or that, that are presented to us. But not only that, you know, we're not engaged in the day-to-day activities, we're not aware of, you know, what, what occurs at the board meetings or anything like that, none of that really gets reported to us. So maybe incorporating, you know, something into our quarterly meetings, you know, where you submit a report or something, we can get that out to the community as well. I know that's, that's one of the ways to try to increase communication. Having a, a meeting, you know, is a good starting point and to try to continue forging forward and improving this relationship and I'm glad to see that you guys are getting back on track, you know, with your building and with your meetings and, and those types of issues. We look forward to reading the letter and then I, I think, you know, if we do have questions that they can be presented or, you know, discussed in developing an agenda for a joint meeting.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Any, if any as a council have anything? Councilwoman here.
I want to welcome you to the council meeting and thank you for your comments and, and hearing about your grandmother and your relatives, you know, going back to Colonel and Dolly Moore, so it's, it's very good and to hear you, you know, speak of that and welcome to our meetings and I hope that we move forward in a productive way because I do support the seed preservation and was here when it started up and so, yeah. And, and I want to thank all of you guys that are carrying it on.
Thank you, Councilwoman here. Treasurer Chapman?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you also for coming and my grandmother was a good friend of Mary Barker. My grandmother lived to be 100 years old, so that was a long time ago, but thank you for coming and initiating work together.
Happy to, thank you all for all of your time, I appreciate it.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I also would like to thank you for coming and sharing with us. That's been one of my concerns over the years, I know a lot of hard work has been put into that seed preservation project. And while the council is not directly involved and they are separate entities, they, it is a Pawnee project. And when I go to that roundhouse and I see that corn hanging from up there, it wouldn't be there but for the seed preservation project. And I would like to acknowledge Deborah Ekahawk as well. I know she's been a real fighter for that and I appreciate that, so thank you for coming and I look forward to hearing more about it and how we might go forward together and, and make some good things for our tribe. Thank you. And I, and I actually knew Dolly and Colonel Moore when I was a little girl, I was a baby, you know, but they used to dance and they looked so good when they, when they would dance in their, in their Pawnee clothes, so did I, hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
President.
Yes, Secretary.
Wanted to acknowledge Mr. Buford, he did stop by my office last week and we had a pretty good conversation. I believe he shared that letter that you shared with him, he shared that letter with me and so, you know, again, appreciate the efforts that he's putting in to at least start some meaningful engagement, you know, we'll, whatever our office can do to help, you know, be a liaison in that, we'll certainly do that. Thank you, Mr. Buford.
President Nettle?
Yes.
I had one more question to ask. I've had several Pawnee citizens ask me about our last council meeting, the one of where we switched over, we had our, acknowledged Dr. Evans and Councilwoman Kibble, but I have been asked by a lot of the Pawnee people who watch our meetings virtually, they are unable to find this on, would, how, how can, can someone explain maybe Virgil, how we can, or where it is, or how do they reach it, or, yes?
Are you, are you speaking about the actual meetings or...
Yeah, the recording.
Yes, I think I'll get with Erica and Jamie, but I believe what they need to do is look on the, it's on the YouTube channel, is that right, Erica? Yes, it's on the YouTube channel, so what we can do is get that information out, maybe put it on our website.
Okay.
Reinforce how people can view that at a later date and then give some instructions on how to do that.
Okay, great, because that is the way a lot of our people listen now, rather than newspapers, okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman here.
So the United Indian Nations of Oklahoma is trying to set up a meeting for the five tribes in the Pawnee Agency, which are Pawnee, Tonkawaw, Oto, Missouri, Ka and Ponka.
Did I give them that?
Yeah, okay, so they're looking at the 29th, the date hasn't been finalized, that's the only one that's, that has really come forward as, as the date. I've asked about the next week, but they said there's a lot, a lot of meetings going on that next week, so I just wanted to let you know that. We haven't heard back from everybody on it, so we don't know if it's gonna happen, but, and, and we don't really have the details yet, but Margot's trying to contact the other tribal leaders and I know President Nettle has also been reaching out. That's all.
Yes, Councilwoman Nettle.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Councilwoman Nettle.
Chairwoman, excuse me?
Yes, I recognized you.
Oh, thank you. You have to, I, I haven't sat up these seats for years, y'all just gonna have to give me a little, little room here. Donna, I'm interested in that five tribes getting together and I would just like to throw out, put it on the table so to speak, you know, the tobacco compact is, is a big issue and I know some of the tribes met in Oklahoma City recently on that and I know very little about it, but certainly I think that is one of the important agenda items and I think that the five tribes getting together again as some type of collective group would be very helpful in pushing, pushing our needs forward. There are some other things that, that I, I'm involved with and it's the tribal, it's the CHAP program, it's the Health Aid Program. It's the CHAP program, it's the Health Aid Program, and I would really like to see that implemented here at the tribe. We have a grant from the Southern Plains Tribal Health Board as a sub-grantee from their contract with the IHS, and they're able then to go out and to be able to train our tribal members in the areas of behavioral health, primary care, and dental health. And I... We have an issue with dental health therapists in Oklahoma, and I'm working on a group now to try to develop state legislation to have them legislate and approve a statute that will approve dental therapy in Oklahoma. The Indian Healthcare Improvement Act does provide for that, and it's a great opportunity for our people and our people that want to go out and work and get an education, get a job, and go out into the community and work, but we need to get that bill passed. And I think it's that kind of thing, Donna, that we can put on that agenda and help move that forward. So thank you for that.
Okay. Wait. Yes, Councilwoman Butler?
I just have one announcement. TDC has sent out a ribbon cutting for May twenty-fourth. This is for the expansion on the twenty acres for the new, what is it called, stage. They're going to be starting to have concerts and movie viewings throughout the summer, but the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting that for them. It's just, you know, basic ribbon cutting for it, just to introduce it to the community, but everyone is invited. I know they just now put out the flyer yesterday or today, so I just wanted to make mention of that.
All right, thank you for that. That was one of my items.
Madam President?
Yes.
I wanted to make a correction. I had said, I know, Vice President, you asked the date for the Southern Plains Tribal Health Board. I gave the wrong date. The date is actually June tenth and eleven.
I didn't think it was the twenty-fourth. Okay. On... There is a missing murdered Indigenous person's walk at the Pawnee Nation Cour... Or I'm sorry, Pawnee Nation Courthouse, at the Pawnee Courthouse gazebo, beginning at ten AM on Friday, the twenty-third. Councilwoman Butler mentioned the Stonewall Park ribbon cutting on the twenty-fourth at ten. The Veterans Dance will be on May the twenty-sixth, noon meal at the campgrounds in case of rain, I'm assuming the roundhouse. And then on May the thirtieth, there's going to be the Mad Bear Model, Mad Bear Medal of Honor Headstone Installation, and Matt Reed has been in contact with this, and this came out as a correction from a sign that was out here on, I believe it was Highway eighteen, with the recent installation that had just been done. They noticed that there was an error, so he's been working to get that fixed and noticed that the Medal of Honor headstone had not been installed at his gravesite. So those details will be forthcoming, but I just wanted to get you the date. Also, we have a joint meeting that's scheduled with the Housing Authority. On the agenda right now is a presentation, and we haven't finalized the agenda yet, so we don't know if there's any items that will need to have action taken on then. So if that is necessary, we will call a emergency meeting for that. Otherwise, it's just going to be discussion. And so that takes us on into item number eight, to set the next meeting date. So there may be an emergency meeting on May the seventh. Just depending on when we can get the agenda finalized will determine whether it's a special or emergency meeting, and if not, the first Tuesday of every month is when we do our Business Council meetings, and the first Tuesday is June the third. So May the twenty-seventh is for the joint meeting with the Housing Authority, and then June the third, twenty twenty-five, is the next scheduled special meeting.
Madam President?
Yes.
I can just confirm that it is, they don't need any action. It's their strategic plan, and they're in the process of finalizing it, so the input from the council is what they're looking for. So the commissioners will be presenting that and then just asking if you guys have any input or anything so they can finalize it on their end. So it should be like a work group session.
Okay, well, we were wanting to utilize it as a... Since we have the opportunity to have a joint meeting, if council had any topics to present at the time, but without, you know, making that request or soliciting input yet, we don't know if there's a determination to be made yet, whether those items will need any action or not.
Action items from the council, on the council side?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
That's what I was trying to clarify. I know. Okay. Any other? On the housing... Can you do virtual option?
Yes, there is a virtual option because our... The consultant will be virtual, because she'll be in Alaska at that time, so.
Any other announcements? If not, let's move to item number nine, adjournment. Want to change a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Got a motion by Vice President, second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garda, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh huh.
Carol Muddell?
Yes.
We are adjourned at six eleven PM. Thank you.